Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Committee of the Whole for January 14th. I have my call on a face-to-face with the last performance of Waya Mayor. Really, I'm going to have to look at my presentation. How do we get there? Motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Councilor France, secondly, Councilor French, follows in favor. Phil, who is to carry. We have financial services here today to give us Budget 101. So before we dive in deep into the budget, we get to have an opening ceremony. What is being all handed over to you?
Thank you very much, Mayor Elliott. My name is Christine Matthews. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the district. And yes, to Mayor Elliott's point, we had originally planned on doing our second budget workshop today and diving into the general fund. However, as we get a better understanding of council priorities, we wanted as management team to take a sober second thought, have a quick look, make sure, see if we could better align our proposed budgets to emerging thought processes. So we'll bring that back to you hopefully next week. And this actually is advantageous for the finance department because right now we're also very recently gone live on new software, new charter of accounts, and brought in a brand-new financial analyst. So we're not unhappy that we're getting a bit of breathing room there for a week. Given that council hasn't received any financial orientation per se yet, though, and that often we do start off our budget sessions providing a little bit of the lay of the land for you, we thought we could at least get going on that and get you ready so that we can dive in next week. So basically, the goals today, what we're going to do is just all introduce you to the financial services division, what we do and who we are, and then we'll go off and start doing some of that orientation. I'll talk to you a little bit about legislation and policy. From a high level, we won't get into everything today. We are still going to work on that just-in-time concept of orientation. But budget starts to tap into several different areas. So we'll try and pick out those areas in the legislation that help you understand some of that, and then any basic day-to-day stuff that probably you just need to make sure you're aware of. We'll also have a little bit of discussion around the structure of our budget and how it lays down. I think most of you are fairly aware, but we'll just make sure. And then we'll give you a little bit of heads-up about our financial position in terms of funding sources and things that may be available to us as we move through the budget process. So this is our D.O.S. Financial Services Team. I'd love to say that we're like a coveted, award-winning finance team, but we still have some work to do. Having said that, we did win this award. We are the Halloween Costume Champions. Thank you very much. We're very proud of it, reclaiming some of our past glories. This team is made up essentially, so the Chief Financial Officer, myself, we have essentially two management areas right now. Our financial operations team, Lynda Claussen is essentially our controller for the organization. She makes sure that all of our accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, the basic day-to-day functioning of the organization and the payments in and out go through Lynda Claussen's group. So it is a group of about six FTE, full-time equivalencies. Over on the accounting services side is some of our more senior accounting-related staff, and they report directly to me. And we have essentially 5.5 positions running there. The latest one introduced was the procurement officer that was approved last year, which we'll chat more about later on. But where that structures will fall into place, we'll discuss later. So and then for the time being, we are also working on a technology transformation program, which is a multi-year program to improve and enhance our financial and operational systems. Finance is the platform of that system, and consequently, we are very heavily involved in TTP right now. And so we need some stewardship and ownership of that product as well. And so even though we show this very distinctly as being in a separate box, realistically, the technology transformation program is hitting every single one of the departments, and we'll continue to do that over the next two years. So just, sorry, kind of got ahead of myself there. Financial operations and Lynda Claussen. So Lynda Claussen is also the deputy control or deputy financial officer for the organization and essentially operates as our controller, as I said. We have tax and related administrative programs aside from the cash management pieces here. Well, we administer approximately, right now, about $79 million worth of cash and investments. We have an accounts receivable collections department that has multiple arms. And essentially, we run about $40 million of taxes through here between our own taxes and multiple agency taxes. We have a payroll for multiple employee groups, QP, IAF, exempt library, volunteer, fire department, payroll budget of about $20 million all-in with benefits and everything included, and about 200 FTE and about 300 staff. We are now one of the larger employers in Squamish or continue to be, behind the school board in Vancouver Coastal Health. We have about $50 million that we process through accounts payable through the year. That goes up and down through the year, but essentially, we operate quite a bit of money and quite a few different business units come through their cash and financial transactions all come through us. On the accounting services side, the various functions that we're involved in is the financial plan, which is part of which you'll start to see next week. We have our client service team. So we are an internal service department, and as I said, all of our business units work through us for their financial affairs. So we have liaisons for them to work with. We are heavily involved in development accounting. We have several, or a multi-year front-end agreements with our oceanfront. There are about $33.9 million worth of DCC projects was the original contracted value or expected value under those contracts. And they run for 20 years, and they're quite complex and require a lot of stewardship to ensure that we are staying within the confines of those various bylaws and agreements. We manage about, so we've got capital accounting, millions of dollars of that, but essentially about, we average about a $22 million dollar capital program per year. We do grant claims accounting for all of that capital area. We do the risk and insurance administration programs. Right now, we have approximately, sorry, just pulling up all the statistics, $560,000 worth of insurance policies and claims management to oversee and administer. We also do financing, investing. We have about $22 million of our own borrowing, $25 million when you consider our consolidated entities. And we have, and we do financial and provincial reporting. I can't even begin to tell you how many of those they make us do, often making us regurgitate similar information over and over again. But our heavy season for that is usually May and Jim to have all of those reportings due. They also, we also get impacted by the provincial reporting, CARIP reporting, Statistics Canada likes to do a lot of capital reporting through us. We do the statement of financial information for all of our consolidated, or for our consolidated entity. CARIP, CARIP, sorry. Sorry, that's the carbon reporting that we have to do. And then we get a small grant back for that reporting piece. So with engineering, we work with them to do that reporting. And we also have gas tax reporting and then various programs that are required, requiring that. Do I have everything? We, as you become aware, we do the community enhancement grant administration. And more recently, we're getting heavily into the financial systems and technology transformation program over the last two years essentially. And that obviously brings lots to do outside of our day-to-day regular work. On top of that, we, it's, to be frank, it's making it a little bit difficult for us to advance some of our other areas in financial services right now. But we're hoping to incorporate some of the policy development, new business processes as we go through that program. And then we, as of last year, were approved to introduce procurement. So we would still be a decentralized procurement shop, but we would introduce actual expertise to help guide and build some programming around that. The, some of the key things for legislation, policies, and resources, again, I said, we'll just do, we'll still try to keep with the just-in-time orientation. So things like financial statement and audit, we'll, we can get into more fulsomely when your auditors are here. We can talk more fulsomely about property taxation when we get to that stage of how we set tax policy, et cetera. But I'll do a little bit of a high-level view in terms of how you might need to understand things for budget. So some of the key legislations and related regulations, well, I'm sure Ms. Arthur's probably already told you that there are, I don't know how many acts that we work under on any given day. The key one for us is the community charter. That's our first point of reference. But we are also impacted by the Local Government Act, Financial Information Act, Ports Property Tax Act, and various acts for any of our partner group, like for any of our clients in terms of regulations and environmental management. So examples of that would be our solid waste and making sure that we have post-closure liabilities and things like that from a financial end. Those are coming from those various acts and regulations within those acts or plans underneath those acts. We also have various acts and things that any business has. We have to deal with worksafe or, you know, CRA, worksafe, et cetera. So we're constantly dealing with a number of various things. Local Government Act is all of our development financial area. And we have lots of different, based on taxes, we have to often go to other acts for municipal aid, university acts, things like that, to see who's exempt from taxes. But we'll hone in today on the community charter because those, that's again, the key one and the one that we will most reference when we're talking to you outside of the Local Government Act. There are basically two key sections for the community charter that impact financial management specifically, Part VI and Part VII. General concepts behind this is that essentially, we're trying to ensure transparency and stewardship of public funds. And we're also making sure that we collect monies to maintain the operations of the municipality, and we ensure fair and equitable treatment with all the ratepayers. So those are kind of the overarching thought processes as I go through the legislation that I sort of hold as being our vision, our goals, and the intent of the legislation when I'm going through. So under the community charter, one of the first things that you probably, maybe Ms. Arthur's told you about this too, but you are required by law to appoint a financial officer. There's lots of laws and requirements as I went through, and understandably, I don't think anyone expects a councillor to know all of them coming in. So there are key positions and key areas that the province ensures that you have to have officers for, and one of them is your financial matters. So essentially, like everyone else, I report, I report directly to the CAO. Having said that, under these responsibilities, if at any point there was concern that rules, things weren't being followed within, then I would potentially have direct access to you very happily. I never have to bother with that because your CAO is very diligent and responsible with the rules as well. So generally, I still operate within that same concept of overarching CAO. But if there was any concern or anything, then in theory, I would be responsible to let you know.
Ms. Arthur, is this analogous to the position of an approvals officer, which Gary Buxton holds a little bit different in his workings and responsibilities and accountability?
The nature of the officer position is different, absolutely, but like an officer position, that we are, we are required to make sure that legislation is followed, particularly around taxation issues like that. We basically make sure that you're staying on the right side of the law with those. We are, I think you know, municipalities are an arm of the gurk of the provincial government, and as such, we often have marching orders from their legislations and their requirements so that we stay in line as a, as a department of that ministry. Sorry, distracted thought. So anyway, one of the key things that you'll see is a fairly extensive list. We receive all money. We're responsible for keeping all funds and securities, investing municipal funds, expending in the manner authorized by this council, ensuring we have accurate records and maintaining and keeping those records safe. And then obviously, control and supervision over all other financial affairs in the municipality is where we sometimes, probably departments feel like we stick our nose in where it's not always wanted, but that's the reason, is that we are actually CFO, myself, I am actually responsible to ensure that there are sufficient controls and matters going on for all the financial affairs. I am currently your appointed CFO, and Lynda Claussen is your deputy financial officer. She has full authority to do anything I could do should I not be involved. We have about 22 departments that we are responsible for ensuring comply. And the ministry requires either me, myself, or Lynda Claussen to sign off on all reporting, financial reporting and certifications for grant claims, borrowings, investings, anything we do of a financial nature, they will look for our signatures to weigh in on, basically attest to the fact that the information, the financial information is correct. So other key things as we get ready for budget, the Part VI, financial management, you are, under Section 165, you are required to adopt a financial plan by bylaw before the annual property tax bylaw is adopted. It must include five years. It must set out the objectives and policies of the municipality. And we must set it out the proposed expenditures, funding sources, and any proposed transfers to and from and between the towns. So that's a high-level capsule of what is a page-long of legislation, but those are kind of the key things you need to understand. What that means is that as we go through the year, a resolution on this table does not, does not constitute a change in our financial plan per se. Having said that, we recognize, I think everybody recognizes, that trying to forecast and budget a year ahead of what you're doing isn't always a perfect science. We try to keep our financial plan bylaws at a fairly high level, certainly in compliance with the legislation with all the pieces we have to tell, tell someone. But we try to keep it at a fairly high level to allow some flexibility for day-to-day operations and issues to come to a head. Having said that, if at any point we have concerns, we bring you very specific project lists and things like that. So within that, if we can wiggle around, we generally, for major projects, will bring those back to the council table if for any reason we need to shift between those. We'll try and bring that back to you, ground-truth that with you. As long as it fits the broader piece of the bylaw, so where we said we'd take money from, what we said we were going to expand for that category or area, we generally are still within the law. And we basically, I'm constantly looking at any variations to make sure that we're staying within the confines and still making sure that we relay with the council where we think we might actually be changing direction or having to do something. Key examples this year were when some of our contracts came back too heavy, and we had to make decisions between whether we were going to do that capital project or that capital project based on the budget envelope that we had. And we brought it back to this table. Council gave us license to move a little bit of money from one project to another to make sure that we could still at least get one of the two projects done.
Does that answer that? The tax objectives and policies of the municipality, the specific tax, would that be the strategic planning council?
Actually, in this case, it's a prescribed set of policies and objectives, and it's on your financial plan bylaw. So it's right in the body, right behind the financial schedule. We have policies and objectives. And again, it's quite prescribed with the type of nature of information. You can have more than that, but there's some minimum things that we have to talk about. Things like how, how we choose to fund and source, or source, fund our plans and how much we give out the permissive tax exemptions, those types of things. When would we give permissive tax exemptions, revitalization tax exemptions? So again, we try to keep it fairly high level, make sure that you have some flexibility, but generally, those types of policies are required to be embedded into them. And it helps guide everybody on how we build the budgets as well. Okay? Within the 166 of the community charter, we are required to have some form of public process. It's not heavily prescribed. In the past, what we've done is a host of different things. We have done surveys, public surveys going into council that feed the information into the council table as to what is required. We also have all of our meetings open to the public, and generally, after each workshop, we will monitor our various chains in, including the audience, to see if anyone would like to weigh in and discuss while we're workshopping. We generally, once council has a bit of a plan or they're somewhat happy with where they're sitting with the financial plan, we'll take it out to a specific public meeting where we invite people to come in and generally have a roundtable with council, make their concerns known. So we have a couple of different ways that we approach that from year to year. Those are the basic ones we do at all times. I think what, or year over year, we do sort of those basic ones as a minimum. One of the things in this area, though, is if you need to make a financial plan amendment, I will encourage you to still make sure that you somehow advertise that a change is happening or something's happening so that it doesn't get amended without some form of that. The consultation is still important. Sometimes it's an inform, sometimes it's, sometimes it's no better than an inform in those types of situations, but it's, I still think, an important process.
It's quite rare. I mean, I think we amended our financial plan in the fall for a very specific reason, but I can't remember that we did it any time prior to that in the last term.
No, and interestingly, I was updating our financial analyst and told him that that was the first time in my career I've ever amended a financial plan for the very specific reason that that one, we wanted to ensure that BCE housing was made whole in that particular case, and we had an emergency expenditure which we had at the same time. But one of the, I'm not going to, I guess what I've found over my career is that it is better to have a plan and stick to it. We go through a lot of energy and time to prioritize and make sure we have the right things in the plan. A lot of things get left on the table. So to start getting into a point of sort of quick changes through the year generally erodes your long-term sustainability and your ability to be thoughtful and plan your longer-range financial scenario. So I'm not a proponent of financial plan amendments. Generally, we will be looking to work within the confines of that wherever possible. Generally, I will be encouraging you not to do that.
Thank you for that context. I didn't realize how special we were.
The, I just highlight a couple of areas that I didn't necessarily put on the screen, but Section 164 says that we, our fiscal year is January to December. That varies from the provincial fiscal year, so from time to time, you'll see some discrepancies between our transit contracts, being a prime example. They're quoting you for a contract and how we have to reset it into our fiscal year. Same with our RCMP contracts. We're constantly having to rejig those to get them into our fiscal year.
Is there a reason we have a different fiscal year than the province?
I don't actually know the reason behind it.
Do other municipalities align with the provincial?
No, we are required by law to have a fiscal year. No, one, Section 167 is the annual financial statements. You are required to have them and to appoint an auditor. Right now, your auditor is BDO, and we will again circle around more on this as we come into that process. But for you to know, we are actively in the process of going through a financial year end right now, and again, enhanced by the fact that we're on a new system. So our BDO partners would like to come in and do some security and assessment on the new systems as well. So that'll be a little bit more in-depth this year, and we are very much operating with new charter of accounts, et cetera. So a little bit of a game changer for us. We are also required to report council remuneration expenses and contracts. We do that through the SOPI reporting, so, which is the statement of financial information that we put out. It's a component of that report as well. So we just mirror the two together and provide all of that reporting at the same time. Some of these things, so why a financial plan? Well, and why are they so important? 173 requires that we not make an expenditure unless it's reflected in our financial plan, unless it's an emergency expenditure, at which time we are required to figure out how to make that emergency go away. But we could be required, if we can't manage it within our financial plan bylaw and confines of that, then we would be required to amend in that case as well. In Section 174, we have limits on borrowing and other liabilities. I'll get into that in more depth when we get into our financial position. I think there was some questions not as time on borrowing and debt, so I'll provide some of that information back to you. And we must not incur liabilities during the planning phase unless for the current year. So sometimes you'll hear staff come in and go, can we have an early release up because the budget's not done yet? There are rules around whether they can come in and ask for that or not, and essentially, it's on our big capital programs and projects. So if our last financial plan, all financial plans are five years, so our last financial plan and the one that we're currently working on right now is 2018 to 2022. If that project, that major project or that funding area is represented well enough in our 2019 or our second year of that financial plan, then legally, we could proceed in this concept of early release if council knows they're going to put it in the next financial plan bylaw and not put us on the wrong side of that one we put the next one through. We would be operating legally in that context. We would not be, if we say, wanted to embark on our two or three million dollar recreation project, and we decided to go and spend money on that before we passed our financial plan, that would take us offside in this provision. So again, I'm generally watching for that and trying to make sure that you're getting those things that are, keep you on the right side of what you're supposed to be doing. And again, we keep, we try to watch the latitude. So if it's active transportation and it's one of these minor projects instead of a different minor project, you probably have some room to work with that. But if it was something major where it would really take our financial plan to a different place, then we'll come in and tell you that that's probably not.
Just something you said there, I wanted to check it. Is it not a rolling five-year financial plan?
So through the mayor, I wish we were that slick yet. It's not a rolling one yet. We try to look through year two. I don't know that we're as good at that as we could be yet. And we certainly try to project out some of our capital. Our engineers do this better than some of the other groups, some of our capital projects and programs for the fifth year. It would be wonderful if we got so, so well, so, you know, did this so well that we were doing, just literally going and looking now at year two of the next plan. Unfortunately, I think you would all agree that probably if we gave you 2019 of last year's plan, it wouldn't necessarily align with what you'd like to do now, or the tax level that you'd like to go with at now. So 178 is, talks a little bit about borrowing and allows some short-term borrowing room. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move on. And then there's some other areas in this section around liabilities under agreements, liabilities imposed under other enactments, and revenue anticipation borrowing. I don't think it's, any of those sections are particularly relevant to what you're trying to do right now, but we'll, we'll bring those sections back to you at certain times if we were entering some agreements that spanned longer than five years or anything along that line, and bring those elements back to you and talk to you about them then. The revenue anticipation borrowing is just basically a short term. It's like allowing us to incur borrowing before we collect taxes. So I do need to bring you one of those bylaws back in the next little while, and it allows us to carry a line of credit with our bank. So we'll be bringing one of those back in the next three months or so. Financial management, so carrying on with the borrowing concept, we are required, prior to borrowing anything of long-term nature, to issue a loan authorization bylaw. And we, most of those will require some form of electoral assent process. So we borrow for capital purposes, and the law says we can borrow for up to 30 years. We generally try and limit our borrowing to about 15-year amortization window. We have, electoral approval processes can be an alternative approval process or a referendum. As you can imagine, referendums require a considerable amount of administration. They're essentially another election, and Ms. Arthur should crawl under the table if we did that very often, and need considerably more staff. So essentially, we, we don't go to referendum very often, and we would go to referendum for issues that we knew were of a significant impact to ratepayers, maybe more of the nice-to-have nature of services, et cetera. So so far, we haven't had to do one in the time that I've been here. I haven't had to do one prior to that. But right now, we're pretty quiet on that end. A good example- A good example would be if we were going to do maybe a major overhaul or rebuild of a facility or something, that might be a good reason to do that.
That's certainly the ones I've seen in our province. So a community that doesn't have a rec center.
Build one.
Borrowing to build a brand-new rec center. You know, they might have a ring, but they don't have anything around it. So those sort of major decisions that would impact their repair for many years, they would take a lot. But it's also risky because it comes back, no, then you still need a rec center.
I think one of the key, one of the key issues with the referendum or AAP, the alternative approval process is a counterpetition. So it essentially allows you to put that bylaw out, advertise it, and if 10% of the population, if less than 10% of the population expresses concern about it, then you can assume that generally the electoral group is okay with you proceeding. And that's generally how we take most of our borrowing. There are exemptions under the environmental management areas, so where we have big master plans, a liquid waste management plan is a prime example. I legally actually don't have to take that back out to an electoral assent process because the master planning process did all that public consultation. So, so those are kind of key areas where sometimes we don't have to do that, and we can just move forward with the projects that are identified in those places. We also have some temporary borrowing or interim financing. So once we have a loan authorization in place, we often will go for interim construction financing before we take that loan authorization to the big adventure that's 15 years longer. So while we're constructing, we will incur costs. If we aren't able to manage that ourselves, then we would take out another bylaw underneath that bigger loan authorization, and that allows us to construction finance through that process. And we are required to do over long-term borrowing through the municipal financing authority and through the regional district. So the regional district is actually who borrows on our behalf. We have an excellent structure in British Columbia, the municipal finance authority. By pooling all of our resources together, gets us exemplary rates and keeps us at a very high bond rating so that we can get the best financing we could get. If we were all individual municipalities going out to do that, our interest rates, et cetera, would be considerably more. They're also an extremely professional organization and are, this is what they do. They have excellent expertise in this. So we're very luckily served by this in British Columbia. It's a great, great organizational structure. So, some of the other things under financial management is establishing, establishment of reserves. We can establish them, this council can establish them for any purpose. And there are some prescribed ones under law. So if we have land sales, we are required to have a land sale reserve. If we are doing parking, parking and loos and things, we are required to have those in separate reserves. The only thing I will caution you and philosophies that I bring to the table, try not to make 101 tiny little reserves. They don't always serve you well, and they can end up costing your taxpayer more money in the long run. It's nice to know you've got something specific here, but as you can imagine, your priorities change over years, things happen, and you then have to start going through processes to collapse reserves and move them around. So sometimes I will be, well, not sometimes. Generally, I'm a proponent of trying to find more comprehensive reserves and to allow a little bit more flexibility with how we hold and use money. It, I think it, in the long run, saves some money because we're able to deal more frequently with spikes and peaks in the various service areas. So if, for instance, right now, we needed a decking project, but we don't really need that other roads, projects, and things that we might have reserve funds for, we can leverage that within the same reserves. So that's one of the reasons we try to keep our reserves fairly high level, general, as much as possible, just to ensure that we allow some flexibility.
Ms. Magga, is it correct to say that reserves, at this point anyways, only exist in the context of a master plan? A master plan defines how stuff goes in and out, what it should be at, and if things aren't in a master, in a master plan, they will have reserves? Is that?
So again, all great things to aspire to. We are not, we definitely consider what comes out of our big asset management plans. When we're doing our long-range planning in the background, we are feeding that information in to start to see where we might have peaks and valleys. But it's not the only thing that we would necessarily reserve for, and not all of our services have as robust master plans for those areas. So generally, we use it to guide our long-range plan, to start establishing. We use those 20-year financial plan models to give us a rough idea if we're going to start to see spikes or valleys, or whether we need to start ramping up rates and putting more contribution to reserves. So we use them, we use them in that context, but it's not a specific one-to-one relationship. Master plan says this, we do that. With water and sewer, because those reserves are very specific to those, we do tend to tie those more to what those plans are telling us. So when we were here with utilities, we, we mentioned to you that that master plan, that had essentially done a semi-long-range plan, had come back and said that we would need probably $3.5 million worth of reserves in water. So those, we do definitely take that information into consideration and use it as a target when we don't have our own plans. Or, in this case, it supported the plans we were doing in the background a year or so ago. So I was able to kind of agree with that master plan concept or thought process.
So does that mean that we have some reserves that are really just rainy-day funds in the sense that intuitively we have a sense that we should have a pot of money there, but we don't have a specific amount in mind at this point?
That would be probably not fair to say. Through the chair, we do, like I say, we try to keep our reserves very high level, and we do ground truth it back through our financial statements. This council hasn't had the benefit of that, but we'll often, again, ground truth, how many assets do we have? What is their expected life value? How much reserve would we need to carry? What is, you know, average? So we're always trying to think of those kind of key reasons to hold the funds we do. I'll show you later on how our reserves have built, where we were and where we've gotten to shortly. And that'll start to guide you that we haven't really had a huge problem until recently that we've had to worry about whether we're getting too much. We've always been, I think intuitively, you would know that we haven't had enough. But, but we're starting to get into that realm of what is the right number, for sure, with some of our reserves and funds. So, and again, when we come in and talk to you about financial planning, we'll talk to you about that too. One of the key things with sewer this time, when we came in, we said, "You probably don't need to raise your rates. We're probably good. We're self-funding now in sewer. We can, we can do that." So those are the types of guides that we're kind of looking at, longer range, testing it back.
I think when we did the community amenity contribution policy, we tried to generalize where those funds went. So we tried to, as Chris said, trying to make them more high-level, so they have more flexibility with that spend. And then I think through the last four years, with the advent of renewing the OCP, it's quite an expense, and if you put that all into one year, it has a tax impact. So what we said is, well, we know we're going to do the OCP on a regular basis, and so we should be putting away that money for the OCP so that it's there when we decide to renew it, rather than saying, "Okay, well, now there's just going to tax it because this is your way to OCP." So we were, so it's a balance between not taking money from taxpayers that we don't need, but also making sure we have enough reserves for those big projects that we know are not going to spike. So, and again, we'll get into, when we get to the financial position area, you'll have an opportunity to see the levels of reserves and provisions we're holding. And I think that provisions are something you probably want to look at. We've got a couple smaller ones, which may be done years ago for a specific purpose, and this is, again, one of my pews and why I tell you best not to do that because now we have to, you know, basically make a decision to pull it down, send it back to, in this case, our accumulated surpluses, and no longer designate them.
So use of reserves has to be as stated in the bylaw. So you are required to do a bylaw when you establish a reserve. There's, we kind of make a distinction between our reserves and what we'll call designated surplus. Reserves are issued by bylaw, and they are required to be spent and used as per the parameters of that bylaw. With provisions, there are times with designated surplus. Right now, we are treating our community enhancement, or community amenity contributions as a provision. So we're designating it as funds that we bring in, and we're, and we've got very specific background information as to what they were collected for, why they were collected, and how they could be turned around and used back in. And essentially, what you'll find with any of our provisions or reserves, or the bulk of them anyway, we certainly have background as to why. The mayor made discussion around this, what we call our cyclic provision. And our cyclic provision is one of those things where we have about five things identified that we know will happen every three to five years, and they're fairly expensive, they could spike our tax recs when those happen. And so we're just chipping away and putting away so that we can stabilize the tax base. And that's how we would use that particular thing. And you'll actually see the advantage of that when we bring the capital plan out to you because we are actually tapping into our cyclic provision this year with a couple of different items in that capital plan. And in our operation account as well. Special, special projects is what I should say, sorry. So my, purpose for which borrowed money may be used, sorry, just get back on track here. So when we go to borrow, we have to be very prescriptive in the loan authorization bylaws as to what we're using funds for. So we can't go out and borrow for a decking program and then turn around and decide to go build a recreation hall with that borrowing. Okay, so this, that's what this provision says. If you put it out there and you did the AAP on that, then you have to use the borrowing for that purpose. Other sections in the community charter in this area that I'm not going to delve into in a huge way today, but there's information around how we can invest funds. I'll just let you know, it's very conservative, don't worry. We really can't invest anywhere too much. Property, properties accepted in trust, ownership of corporations, self-insurance. They go through a couple of those concepts. Right now, we don't self-insure. We insure through municipal insurance association and property insurance, places we're not really big enough to self-insure at this point. And, and then the fact that we have some indemnification against proceedings, against municipal. But again, I'm sure Ms. Arthurs walked you through some of that. The financial management, just carrying on. This is a really key one, and that's why I gave you the exact quote out of the legislation. We, as staff, will do our very best to make sure you don't get on the wrong side of this. And I've certainly never experienced a situation where that has happened. But it is good for you to know that under 191, a council member who votes for a bylaw or resolution authorizing expenditure, investment, or other use of money contrary to the act, the local government act, is personally liable to the municipality for the amount. The exceptions to this is if you relied on staff, and staff had been, and, staff had been guilty of dishonesty, gross negligence, malicious, or willful misconduct. Potential consequences of that would be that you would be required to pay the amount that you were deemed to be personally liable for, and you could be disqualified from holding office for up to four years. We'll keep you, we'll keep you out of that. So.
Quick question.
Wait a minute.
No, but, so if we voted on a staff recommendation in a case of that position, would that recommendation, then we would assume that the officer employee or whoever was acting here at Norges, or somebody would fall into that sort of this type of exception there?
The exception really only kicks in as far as I understand it. And I haven't done a lot of contract research, but essentially, it would have to be proven that we were willfully trying to mislead you and, or, or really being, so, so staff make errors too. You know, that's, we all make errors, and generally, I think that a court would consider errors and think about that. This is really just, you know, your, your staff person might be telling you, "Please don't make that expenditure. You're assisting business," or "You're doing something that you shouldn't be doing." And you say, "Don't care, doing it anyway." That could put you on the wrong side. And either the municipality, if we were, generally, we wouldn't necessarily go after council, but if we were in a position where we were in a lawsuit because of it, then the municipality could come after you. The insurance company on the other side could come after you. A third party could come after you personally for that. So again, not intended to, this rarely, rarely happens, okay? That's why you have Ms. Arthurs and myself appointed as officers to try and make sure you don't ever run into that. Sorry, I just lost my place there again, so.
Sorry, I need to go back there.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I hit the button there a couple times. So municipal revenue, this section is really all about what money can we bring in? How and, and what's on side, what's not on side? We won't go into this a huge amount, other than you should know that at your disposal won't be budget, our fees, taxes. We're allowed to assess for penalties, fines. We're allowed to enter into certain agreements, grants, donations. Those are all within the legislation areas that we're allowed to dabble in. Fees can only be imposed by a bylaw, so we have to make sure that our fees and charges bylaw is updated for anything we want to charge out. And we are, as a municipality, allowed to prescribe interest and penalties on those. So we are just, there's some other laws that make sure that we don't get too punitive with that. There have been court cases way back where, if they thought our interest or penalties were outside of industry standards, that that might get us on the wrong side of things. But essentially, we have, the legislation says that we can prescribe our penalties and interest. We must make available upon request the basis on how a fee is determined, though. And that is on request, but generally, if, if people are building and designing new fees, it's in our best interest to document how they're coming and arriving at those fee choices and maintain those on record so that it could be pulled in the event that someone did come in and challenge or ask us about a fee. We also have some special privileges for recovery of what they call special fees. These are fees, services that we, that are specific to properties, and they also include things like fire and security alarm colons and things, where we can actually take a cost or charge that we've incurred on a property and apply it to the tax account for the, for the property owner. That allows us then all the same remedies that we would have under taxation. And our fees, our sewer and water fees and solid waste fees, collection fees, all fall under this, and we, we take them to the tax pool as of December 31st of each year. Section 193 talks about some more limits, about how taxation and how you can vary it and things like that, but we won't, again, we won't get into all of that today. That would be a really long session, and not sure how relevant it'll be for you going through this. So there are different forms of taxation. Again, we'll keep this very high level. There is property taxes, which most of us are familiar with, ad ver lorem taxes. Parcel taxes, which we are just in the process of repealing our bylaws, so we no longer have them. And local service taxes, or, which can be parcel or property tax. The local service taxes, right now, the only one of that nature that we have is our BIA, which falls basically under this section.
So a local service area has been discussed as a potential route for the cheap-aid-band protective burn. Is, that's what, that is what refers to Section 210 there?
210 would be that, correct.
Ms. Magga? One thing I'm not clear about, it's been mentioned before, and I'm not sure if it's in a philosophical or a legal context, that means testing like our ability to waive fees or taxes for an individual based on what we, including their income or ability to pay it. Do we have legally any ability to, for example, friend of art user fees, waive those for people who have a child or a kid?
So, through the chair, with fees themselves, we have quite a bit of latitude. So we, we do actually have fees for nonprofits or can have fees for nonprofits. I would just caution this municipality or this council that pretty well, I can't remember what the percentage, but it's staggering. All of our rentals, for instance, are nonprofits. So you would essentially take your recreation revenues and put them back on the tax bill if you did.
Is that an exception? And then same is for taxes, like property tax?
No, we have very limited ability, well, almost no ability to change how property taxes are assessed. And, but through, there is some bylaw options through variable tax setting that we could explore, but it's fairly high administration, and the property owners can opt in or out of it. So we, we haven't gone there. No municipality that I've worked with has gone there to date. The only one I can think of that has done it is under the Vancouver Charter. I think Vancouver does have a, a varied tax. The only variation that we have, I shouldn't say we don't have one, we do. We do vary our taxation collection. And the law says we need to make, assess a penalty of 10% at July 2nd, or the first day after we open, after a holiday. And we actually have a bylaw that splits that up and goes five and five. So we do five on the first day, and we do five a month later. And that is under a variable tax scheme, essentially. And that is under a variable tax scheme essentially. Just out of interest, what's interesting is motions coming to BC and now asking the province to consider the BC Assessment Act a little bit differently. So West Vancouver performed a motion last year. They want more, they want to go pull their housing further apart rather than just residential. They were looking at some of the requirements to differentiate potentially, so between condo and condos and, and, and. And I think the BC Chamber of Commerce is now also working at the BC Assessment Act in terms of how the province is assessing, certainly downtown commercial and assessing as high as a best use, which is very difficult, especially in small communities, to try to protect your downtown high street from becoming just a big block of chain stores as the rents go up and getting a little down. So it'll be interesting to see through our term where the advocacy continues and if the, whether the government's willing to provide some more flexibility to these policies and after, like yet. Exactly. Right now, the basic premise behind all of this is that we treat everyone equitably. We are able to secure and pull in funding for municipal operations and the legislation protects us fairly well from that regard and gives us quite a big hammer to, to make sure that property taxes are collected. But it doesn't give us a lot of variation, it's true. We wouldn't be able to necessarily say, hey, we're not going to tax that. We have permissive tax exemptions that allow us, that's really our only vehicle and it can only be for nonprofits or not-for-profit and charitable, a length, a length, we, topic organizations. And, and then there's some other things, well, I'm going to talk about statutory and permissive exemptions next. So under tax exemptions, there are several statutory exemptions. The obvious ones, government lands, so provincial, federal and municipal lands are all exempt from taxation, which covers generally hospitals and also libraries and churches themselves are generally exempt statutorily. We are also provided some opportunity to do permissive exemptions, so that's where we may decide that for a nonprofit, affordable housing or something like that, we might choose to do that. Generally, what we do is lands around churches are a key one that is often done. If we have partners under agreement that they're doing municipal services, we have some latitude to grant them permissive taxes. And then there's some other different areas under the various permissive area for heritage ripper and revitalization taxation and things like that. So there is a little bit of latitude for us to move, but it's, it's very specified. It has to be done by October of the year prior going into the taxation. There's also the requirement that if we lease out or our government lands or crown lands are leased out to profitable organizations, that we are required to also let BC Assessment have those leases and to set them up on our tax rules. The rest of these sections are all about administration, collections, how property is assessed and penalized equitably across the province. I won't get into all of that with you and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me, but again, you can do that some more too on the get into the tax side of So the key policies for budget.
So we're doing this for two hours, but would like the council like five minutes just for you at some point?
I don't.
If there is a natural break somewhere in the next few minutes, this would be, we've been doing for an hour, so.
Yeah, this, I mean, if you're feeling like you need one now, I can break now for sure. That's fine, while we delve into the policy.
Let's do that, let's take a five minute break, so we recess for five minutes eventually and then we'll move on to the policy.
Great, thanks.
Right, we're back in Canadian Hall and we're doing Budget 101. A little background before next week when we actually start digging for the general policy.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott, to have you, 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 to have you,
To do is at least come up with a set level of projects envelope. So that again, the tax rates don't go up and down, at least we know we could cover over some. I think last year we got to just under about $500,000 was the special projects and then capital was tax funded by about 1.5 million.
Can you just remind us what a special versus a capital project is?
Sure, I can. Essentially it comes down to whether it falls on the operational or the capital side of the world from an accounting perspective. So our capital projects are the big infrastructure changes, replacements, fleet, things like that. Our operating projects might be things like doing an OCP or zoning policies or things like that. Those would be maybe special projects. They're considered to be anything that's non-recurring. So we're going to put it in, it's going to have a set life and then it's going to come back out of the budget. You know, once a special project, they have a lifespan versus our operating costs which go in as a service level change and then we assume that's carrying on through the five-year plan and on.
So work we contract out, like consulting work, would be a special project versus we've added the trails machine and that requiring FTE change to allow us to support that new machine. So that's ongoing operating costs, is that?
Somewhat, yes. And some projects, actually, we do hire staff in to do those projects, but they would be on a temporary, their FTE is considered a temporary item that would come back out when that project is done. That's probably all we need to go on there. Policy, other policy objectives are that we'll only go to debt for larger projects. So we used to bundle up a number of smaller capital initiatives and take them to borrowing. It was getting a little bit crazy from a borrowing end. And essentially, the entire capital project was often going to borrowing and was not making a lot of sense. You don't want to incur more costs than you need to in terms of interest and administration around borrowing and financing. So we now currently have a threshold of about $300,000. So anything below $300,000, we won't pull and send to borrowing. We will try to deal with that either with reserves or direct funding or other grants or donations or anything else that we have. If you look in the policy document, you'll see that they actually even indicate that we might get to a level of 1 million in talking to council over the years and with our own financial realities. Not sure that's wholly realistic for us to get to a $1 million level for any one project at all. We would probably take that for borrowing. So, but we are finding that 300,000 is a pretty good, pretty good level metric to stick with. Debt servicing ratio below 20%. Talked a bit more about borrowing. We did sort of delve into it a little bit at utilities, but I'll explain it a little more fulsomely down below in terms of what that 20% really means. But essentially, it's 5% below our legal maximum borrowing authority. And that just allows us to always have emergency room so that no council takes us right up to the borderline and then we're stuck with not being able to borrow until, or until debt drops off or our revenues increase. From a grants perspective, basically, municipal is a best practice. You should not rely on grant funding for your long-range planning. So you should not be setting your rates and everything always assuming that you're going to have grants. For the most part, we're pretty good at this. And by all means, we certainly go and look for grants for shovel-ready projects that are in our financial plans. But the concept here is don't always rely on it to the point that you're not resilient or if another level of government doesn't giving out grants that you can no longer do your basic infrastructure repair and replacement. So the only areas still that I think we're relying fairly heavily on outside agencies to fund our required level of capital is probably active transportation and our dyking programs. So right now, we use our community works fund pretty heavily for our active transportation line item and dyking. We generally are going back to Y M B C and different dyking programs to at least support half of the dyking asks.
This is where the master plan has become very strategic because it means we have a whole bunch of projects identified. And so when these grants come along, we're not chasing them, we actually have identified the projects. And it actually makes our submissions stronger because they're mapped out.
So the title there of the shelf ready is shovel-ready?
Yes. Thank you very much. That's horrible.
It's a bit of a Freudian.
You know what happened is I repurposed this slide.
I didn't even catch that.
I repurposed this slide from our past Francophone. And I never caught it. Thank you. It's shovel-ready. Yes. Yes. That's too funny. No one's got that. Yeah. All right, we'll fix that. Shovel-ready.
I think it's because we just missed you, Matt.
I thought that you're paying attention, though. That's awesome.
Yes, some grant programs for capital projects, for example, the eligibility is not only a local government, but conceivably a local nonprofit, in fact, even the Squamish Nation. And my question is, I've seen this where the district might be competing or seem to be competing with another local organization for a big federal grant. Say the West Coast Railway Heritage Park or Squamish Nation for infrastructure or something. Is there anything in the policy, the 2011 policy, that speaks to that, that consideration? Or I'm fishing for it, I guess, but it could conceivably be a consideration where you could be in competition with another local organization for a potential grant program?
So this particular policy doesn't necessarily delve into that in a big way beyond the fact that there is a public partnership component to one of the recommendations. So I wouldn't say it was here. In the past, certainly, a council's strategic drive direction was that we would always try to partner with other agencies wherever practical. So I think it's more, I think it's a philosophy staff still look to whenever we're engaging or heading into something major, still dealing with that mindset.
I suppose it comes down to having good dialogue with those community projects and knowing these situations in advance.
Yeah, it's a good point. I don't know if there's said, maybe Linda Glenday would like to speak to it more. I don't know what kind of infrastructures in place or within to guide that. It's generally not this document.
Yeah. The program that we've been talking about with respect to Brennan Park, in fact, other organizations locally could be eligible for that, for that program, just as an example.
It's a good point.
Do you want to say anything?
At the risk of repeating what Ms. Matthews said, it isn't in policy, but it's definitely top of mind every time we go for a grant. And conversely, when we hear someone going for a grant that we are also going for, it's, you know, we tend, we may be in competition. There are some examples, but I'm up here. So it's top of mind, it's not written in policy or in partnerships.
But you will see assigned letters of support for those organizations for their grant opportunities. And I think we certainly, seeing the last council, were always trying to develop those relationships so that if there was an opportunity to partner, that we got in front of that before the granting opportunities. It's always nice to not be in competition with them.
And also, always nice if someone else can do it better. Government is really intended to fill in those blanks where the nonprofit, or the profit sector or the nonprofits aren't able to do it. And essentially, the thing around grants is don't chase grants, right? Make sure that it's something in your financial plan you're intending to do anyway. Get them shovel-ready. I think a grant opportunity comes along, let's scoop it and go. The land and sale, land and asset sales, this, basically, this came down to try not to speculate. We're not in the land speculation business. Definitely make sure that the proceeds go either to pay down debt or to going to land sale reserves, but that's the law anyway. We are required to do those two things anyway. So essentially, it really comes down to hold lands for municipal purposes. And if you don't have municipal purpose, we're probably not the best organization to be in land speculations. And then reserve contributions. The three recommendations out of this was that we establish emergency reserves. We maintain a certain level of working capital. Their target was about 1/8 of operating expenditures and that we build capital reserves. The metric on that is not clear necessarily on the three of those particularly, although they did make some on the emergency reserve piece. So just to show you that we took this to heart, and since 2012, we went from, we started building our reserves to start allowing us to increase our borrowing targets, our thresholds, and to ensure that we stabilize tax rates and that we can manage infrastructure on a rehab basis. So I think council's done, the council, so you personally, has done an excellent job of maintaining this focus on long range. It's not always easy in the seats you're in. And I think it's really admirable that we've managed to make this kind of headway. The general reserve went for the 20th, in 2012, our general reserve, our general fund reserve being dyking, roads, recreation, all those services that don't fall or into water sewer, had a reserve balance of $180,000. Yeah. Somewhere in infinite wisdoms, reserves were depleted down to levels that I think you could honestly and intuitively say we're not intuitive, we're just intuitively not realistic. We, as of 2017, we now have $3.9 million in that general reserve. I think when you think about a dyking project and the fact that we have $4 million budget for those year-over-year, you can probably say that intuitively, probably still not necessarily exactly where we want it to be, but by the same token, we're not necessarily looking to replace all of our assets in one fell swoop in a reserve. So we try to find that steady state where funds are coming and going from reserves so that in the long run, they stay fairly steady. And that's what we're trying to achieve. Having said that, this council will reap some of the benefits of that great planning in that we will now start to be able to, in our general fund, tap into some of those reserves, which we have had a no-go zone for the last four to five years where we have been building a reserve, but we have not been taking out of it. While we got it up to what we'll deem a sustainable level. This year, with the contribution for 2018, we feel like we've made at least a sufficient level that we can start to tap in a little bit with some of our smaller rehab and replacement stuff. So we'll start to see us contributing and bringing back from our capital reserve now this year.
I feel like I want to high-five Councilwoman.
Well, I think it is something to celebrate. I honestly do. I, you know, I think in the space of that timeframe.
Okay, I'll take that.
To make it to here is truly admirable and very long-range focused, so.
Yeah.
Well, I will just make one very brief comment about that because there was a couple of things that contributed to that position in 2012. But one of them was a previous council that had a couple of years of zero tax increases. While it sounds really great, you're sometimes not doing the taxpayer a favor when you do that because you eventually have to cover the costs.
Just to give you some of the other.
Hold on.
I was just doing the math on Councilwoman speaking here prior to that as well. And I was going to ask the question that you just answered, so thank you.
So water, the water reserve has kind of gone up and down and it's gone, but it still has made some progress. So it's gone from 1.2 to 1.8. But water was one of those, both of our utilities, actually, water and sewer. We got to a place where in order to make sure that our general fund could use the borrowing and build its reserve, we actually tried to make those funds self-sustaining. So we do contribute about, as of 2018, we did contribute about $500,000 into the water reserve from a borrowing perspective, but again, we're trying to wean out of that and make it relatively self-sufficient. But now that the general fund's getting there, we can go to some of the broader principles in this policy and really tap into should it go to borrowing or is it a rehab replacement type initiative? So I think we're getting there. We're just hooking our little pinky around it and starting to see the outfall or the benefits of some great planning all the years. The sewer, sewer utility has gone from 1.8 to 3.6. That's one of the reasons we recommended to you, you didn't need to continue to increase even to the inflation level for utilities issue that we felt sewer was self-funding at this point. Within reason, obviously, if we do a major, major capital project, we would take that to borrowing anyway, but it's essentially self-funding. Solid waste grows from 0 to 1 million. Some questions, even in my own mind, about what we're going to do with solid waste. It's such a heavily contracted service and generally, when the projects come through, we're going with borrowing. I probably need to take some sober second thought, too, and bring some recommendations back to you. I think we definitely need to continue to build some form of reserve or working capital in solid waste. I'm just not sure if the capital reserve is the best position of that yet or how much further we need to take it for the other types of things that might fall in capital that aren't a big horizontal landfill or vertical landfill expansion. So I probably need to take that back and chat with the engineer a bit more.
Okay, in detail, excuse me. One of the reasons there's no utility in 2012 for solid waste was just established in 2013. But part of that bull increase in utility fees was because the closing costs for the landfill hadn't been properly accounted for. And so, so when you say that, you know, is that the best place? I mean, there's increasing the size, that's one way you can spend capital. The other is the cost that somewhere down the road to close it. And that's part, I think, what I always understood, that was part of what that reserve was for. And whether it's enough or not is.
So I will provide some clarification on that. This reserve is not that. The post-closure cost is considered a liability on our statements. So we present that in a different way from an accounting perspective. Same concept, we do put about, right now, it's about $200,000 budgeted to go to a post-closure cost so that when the landfill is closed, we would still be able to maintain and follow up on our responsibilities to ensure the environmental soundness of that landfill. That's, again, between, that is treated as an operating expenditure, that contribution, and the, and then goes into an accounts payable liability account. So it goes to a slightly different place under accounting standards. Won't get too much into the gravel, but to say that this is different than that. So that's why I'm scratching my head with the contract-oriented. It's probably more important that we find better mechanisms to deal with the ongoing operational costs of contributing to those things of debt service on the major initiatives when they come along. It's one of the funds that I will, I'm a little bit concerned about its long-term health, frankly, in terms of being a standalone utility. I'm not sure if it's going to have enough of the revenue sources it needs in the longer term to be self-funded. Some other policy objectives, obviously, operational expenditures, ensure efficient service delivery. So we're always trying to do that. Examine options for service delivery and facilities. So whenever we go into something, make sure you're exploring all the different options around it. For capital expenditures, we'll replace assets based on condition. So just because your life cycle schedules tell you that it should be replaced in 15 years if the condition is good, this document is saying, don't just replace it for the sake of replacing it. Make sure that you're really doing a condition assessment. Always fund for ongoing rehabilitation. So you want to make sure this comes back to that concept of making sure you're funding what you already own and are able in a position to rehabilitate it, maintain it. It's always cheaper to maintain something than to replace it. So if you can maintain it, you can extend its service life. So make sure you have enough money to do those things. And ensure growth pays for itself. So there's basically a number of different, well, I guess, sorry. I'll talk about the capital expenditures first right now. I did allude to this. We do maintain about a $1.5 million going from the general fund to direct capital rehabilitation investment. I would like to see that rise some still. It's still considering, we're now at about a $22 million on average capital plan. That might not be enough, but to get, we'll start leveraging the reserves and come back to you with where that's at. I'm probably going to be pushing with our financial analysis this year to at least bring you some rise on that 1.5 this year as an option for council to consider. But we are looking at other strategies as well. And then the, the ensure growth pays for itself. Key concept here is just that we only front-end items that are specifically an advantage to the community. And I won't stop and go into huge development financing, but front-end agreements are an option of council and we should really only be entering them when there is true significant benefit back to us to do so. So that's one of the policies that comes out in here. The other one that was put on the bottom of this document was public-private partnerships. Consider large projects where business case supports. We would, for sure. I will say that when the province did this several years ago and actually started up a whole office to look at these things, there are surprisingly not as many public-private partnerships that are financially viable and well thought out to begin with. There really has to be some compelling arguments. We have to be able to get financing cheaper. They have to be able to do the service and still make a profit. So there's a lot of elements that make those public-private partnerships. Tick can actually be viable and it's not as easy as it sounds to throw in a policy and do it. Okay, so moving on. I think by now, you've pretty well got a pretty good idea of how we're structured when we budget. We have a general fund and essentially, that fund is balanced by property taxation. So we look at all of the other things. We obviously have grants and we have our own source revenue fees, charges, things along that line that help. But when it comes down and we don't have enough, that bottom line goes to the property tax bill. With water fund, wastewater, sewer wastewater, which we're changing our name for sewer to wastewater, so bear with us, you're going to see documents with both for the next little while. And solid waste, we really are looking at user fee-driven tools in that case. And we are, for the most part, right now, where we're setting the fees and then where there's discrepancies in the budget, where it doesn't come out, where any surplus is going to capital. So we're drawing and coming and going from the capital expenditures for those funds right now or to the capital reserves for those funds right now. So that's how we're balancing off. The reason we came up to you in December was to get a rough idea to make sure that we at least had our fees as something that would be in the ballpark for what you're going to do. But I just want to reiterate, in case there's any misunderstanding, we are still bringing that budget back. You have not passed utilities budget. You've passed the fees bylaws, only, okay? So I think there's a couple of things that council had wanted to just weigh in on, make sure the utility budget is not passed until it goes in that financial plan and your financial plan is adopted.
How's that going, Councilwoman?
Just on the topic of having more general reserves to give us some flexibility and so on, are there reasons why we wouldn't combine water, wastewater and solid waste into one super utility?
At this point, we would be a little bit, essentially, when we collect funds for a certain purpose, we're required to use them for that purpose. So at this point, and it's traditionally water and wastewater are generally their own utilities. That's done across for Tsimomia. So that's generally a done deal. And I wouldn't recommend you combine them. I think there is enough, they're self-funding, they're managing on their own. It's very clear what you're buying. So I have no concern really with the water and the wastewater. I have pushed back a little bit with our engineers for the emerging drainage and ISMP plans and things like that where they've wanted to build another utility. And I've been pushing back and saying, not crazy about that idea for those reasons that I've explained to you. You know, where, let's just make sure we have the master plans, then we can know if we're funding them essentially and we can do it in a broader scale. So it's certainly open to moving things around to some extent. Solid waste is the only one where I'm not 100% sure of the utility necessarily. I think it's been good and that we can really see it. It's too easy to lose track of it. But there's probably other ways to manage that with tools that we have now with our new databases and stuff that wouldn't have necessarily required its own utility and own fees. But we're kind of down that track now, I guess, is the best answer to that. I just think that somewhere along the line, you may need to provide contributions from other areas into there. So we have the solid waste, wastewater and water utilities as well as the general fund. If you can't find it in one of those others for utility funds, it's generally dropping into your general fund, which is why it's a little bit tougher to manage and keep track of sometimes in terms of how do you balance all those priorities? So I won't say keep track of, but how do you balance all those priorities? Because there's so many different things funneling through that one fund in that channel. The, we do have some, what I'll call trust funds, probably the wrong term for them. The aquatic center, we maintain, operate the pool, but really, we pull that out of all of our accounting records and it is the SLRD's information. So we budget for the aquatic center, we send that budget up to the regional district for approval up through the regional district. So we keep that in a separate area in our books and we don't run that into our financial statements. We don't run it into our budgeting documents because it's not ours to budget.
Could this be a future scenario for the library? If the library's going to offer services in Prairie Creek and Berkenia? That they come under a regional district trust fund type of? Currently, they're not. There's no regional district monies.
Tony gave you some money to the library?
I see.
Oh, that's Area D?
I see, great.
But it's not a lot.
Yeah, so no one's brought forward a proposal to us yet. There are different models for libraries on the island. For instance, they actually have regional library boards and they operate almost like a regional government and you contribute to those and grant on them. A library is another, I'll just quickly briefly, or I'll just touch on the cemetery, just so you understand. We do show cemetery operations and maintenance through our books, and that's correct. The cemetery, the fund that's sitting out that we don't reflect in our books is about around the endowment funds for the, again, post-closure, trust funds for cemeteries that are under different legislation. We show those outside, but you are the board that is appointed to also manage cemetery. I'm not sure if anyone told you that? I saw some eyes go wide.
Ensuring growth pays for itself immediately, the development cost charges by law and the fund come to mind. The reason why you haven't referred to it, is that because it comes under other legislation, regulated provincially, policies, provincial? Where does it fit in the picture?
It is, we treat it as a, the legislation treats it as a reserve, as a series of reserves. So you'll see it when we go through the reserve section. From an accounting perspective, we treat it as deferred revenue. So it does come through our financial statements, but we don't budget the collections and stuff through, necessarily through our financial plan per se. It's not always predictable. So, but it is, yes, we reserve it and we have very distinct rules around how and when we can use those reserves. That's all there. You'll see it when we get to the reserve section.
Very good.
The municipal library is, we have some consolidations. So we budget only the municipal umbrella. But when you get our financial statements, you'll see that it includes three organizations, not just our own. Used to include four because we have to consolidate our financial statements and our statement of financial information and things like that are also consolidated. So just heads up for you, the library, for instance, is a separate legal entity. The grants that we provide the library in the form of payroll, helping them with maintenance, some of their IT services, and then some book grant, some insurances, things like that, we treat as a grant in our books to another agency. And we actually bundle them in our community enhancement grant concept. So, but we have set things for those, they do consolidate back into us, though, so then we have to take out all the inter-agency information. But we don't budget the library per se. We budget our grant to the library. Clear as mud? And the municipal corporation is similar. We have a Squammer Sustainability Corporation that is a separate legal entity, but you are the number one, or the 100% shareholder of that corporation. So that corporation, we don't budget for, they do their own budgeting. But we are expected to consolidate all of their information. Your end and any of the entries that we have between us, because we do assist their operations through a partnering agreement, those come under our books. Really quick, I'm sure. Anyway, I'll move on. So the general funds, just to give you, there's your punch list. I think most of you are getting to know that, that it's more than just water sewer. Or, sorry, it's everything that isn't water sewer and solid waste and goes through a number of different areas. We have some minor tweaks coming with our new Business World product that we're rolling out to move a few things around, so bear with us. It might not be the same place you saw it in the budget books last year. We're just trying to streamline ourselves with all the provincial reporting. So there's been some areas where we're moving library and general government down to recreation. general government down to recreation parks and culture because we always have to restate it into our provincial reporting anyway. So a few things like that that we're just changing up, so bear with us. Just see a few changes come. Okay, the exciting stuff. What do we actually have to play with? So, financial positions. So we have different funding sources. I think we've kind of talked to you about that, taxation being one of them, fees being others, and then we have our own source, various own source revenues. But there comes a point where sometimes we have to find other avenues. We have to borrow. Under the community charter, we are allowed about $50 per head of population that we can just borrow on a short-term basis without having to do any alternative approval processes. We don't have to have loan authorizations in place. We can just go out and borrow. We tend to hold that pretty close to our chest, I'm not going to lie, because it's also the emergency, if something happened, we could get borrowing pretty quickly fund. But right now, our borrowing limit for short-term, if we went off the 2016 value of population of 19,512, we have about 975,600, of which we do have one loan authorization under the short-term borrowing for one, or one, short-term borrowing by law, I don't call it loan authorization, for 115. So that's why I think that's the amount left. In long-term borrowing, you've asked us last time to give you an idea of where we're sitting with that. So with borrowing, we have... Borrowing is based on standardized revenues. So it's not unlike your bank if you went in to ask for a mortgage. They look at what's your ability to pay. So they take out, when we file all of our provincial reporting at the end of 2017, they do an exercise where they take out what they consider to be our year-over-year revenues. So they strip it of grants and things like that that aren't, that might spike that, and they come down to our just year-over-year normalized revenue. For us, that was 52 million coming out of 2017. Then they look at our legal debt service, or they take a percentage of that. So our legal debt service is 25% of that. We cannot exceed, our debt service cannot exceed 25% of our revenues. So that's about $13 million. We have a policy cap, a policy I just went through with you all, that says that we won't exceed it, we won't exceed 20% of that. And that's about 10.4 million. Right now, we have, coming out of 2017, we had debt service of $2.8 million. But on top of that, we have what we call authorized and unissued under our loan authorization bylaws, and that works against our credit grading as well. So anytime we have a big loan authorization bylaw out there, even if we haven't borrowed on it yet, that is, that does affect our credit. And so we have another $1.6 million in unauthorized debt. So we have about a $4.4 million debt service level right now, and that represents about 8.5%. So we're allowed 20, and we're at 8.5%. With 16, so we basically have a window of 16.5% legally and 11.5% for policy. That probably shakes down, if we think about a 15-year, 3.5% interest rate, with the sinking fund rates the way they are right now, we could probably borrow up to 67 million on our, under our policy and stay within policy. Having said that, remember that we take debt usually for 15 years. So we break, you'd probably want to break that back down and say, well, it's not going to fall off. So we don't want to take ourselves right to the max tomorrow, because then we'd have 14 years where we couldn't borrow until we built up enough revenue or things changed enough. So essentially, that shakes down to about having, if you look at policy, about $7.8 million a year of borrowing. The other thing you want to consider though, because it would be fun to go spend $7.8 million, but you have to remember that there's an outfall to that. And next year, when your project's finished, your debt, or your debt service is going to come into your operational budget and it's going to hit your taxpayers that way instead. So it's going to hit it over longer term, but it's still going to hit it. So when we make, when we make decisions around our capital planning, we still have to take that into account. And the trick here is that when you see your capital plan, that borrowing cost is not necessarily going to come in for the first year. So if you decide to do a big 10 or 20 million dollar project next year, it'll look like you're fine in this year's tax recognition. But next year, year after that, as it starts to ramp up, that's when you're going to start to hit. $7.8 million per year, you could expect a 2.5% implication on your taxes next year, based on things the way they are today.
How's that going?
Would that be a one-time 2.5 increase over this year, or is it every year it's 2.5 over the year before?
If you did 7.8 million every year, it would be a cumulative stack.
Oh, but just a one-time 7.5?
So that is the debt service for 7.8 million. It equates out, it's like $630,000 or something, and it equates out to 2.5% impact. But once it's in there, you're right, it would, that would be 2.5 carrying on. But if you, you know, next year, your capital plan has debt again. Next year, it has debt again, so.
How's that, or how's that right?
I had a question about the, you said there's a short-term, under short-term borrowing, there's something underway, and I was wondering if you could speak to that so we have sort of a point of reference for what's acceptable or normal under that policy.
Yes. So we took a generator last year to short-term borrowing, and we will have to make sure that in the current financial plan, we make sure we were putting one-fifth of that away each year to pay that principal down. And we are being charged interest for it as soon as it gets taken. Not sure if that one's actually gone yet, but, so we'll pay interest every year, but we need to make sure that we pay one-fifth of it over five years because it has to be paid down in five years, within five years or sooner.
So is it generator for a...
It was out to the arena, I believe.
Oh, I can remember.
Yeah.
Councilor Race?
Yeah, thank you. The 67 million, that's the total amount, present revenue, the total amount we can borrow. Where are we right now, just in a hard number of outstanding debt? Do you have a...
Yeah, so with our consolidated entities, which is one of the things I didn't mention, but we are actually, our debt service is implicated by our partners as well. So our total debt right now is about 25 million.
And the 8.5, going by recollection, just seems to me to have dropped quite considerably.
Yes, yeah.
What happened?
Well, we've had some debt drop off. We're taking less debt every year as well. So we've been borrowing less. So yeah, it's come down. The last time I checked, I think it was we were at about 13%.
That was the number I was sort of...
Yeah. We had two, two old loan authorization bylaws that we were having a hard time getting the ministry to take down, even though we didn't need them anymore, because they'd been done kind of in an interesting way, and it baffled everybody. So we finally got those bylaws off our books. Took us about a year and a half to get that work through with the municipal. They put a municipal servicing resolution on the whole bylaw at the beginning, and then we needed a bit of it left, and it was just, that really confused everybody. It caused mass confusion in the ministry, in the regional government. Took us a year and a half to get that bylaw brought down. Because we went in also, about two years ago, we went when we still had the oceanfront issue. We went in and we actually went through all our loan authorization bylaws and pulled them all down to what we needed left on them to try and give us some more free boardroom so that we wouldn't go over our policy targets. So that helped as well. Took us a little while again. We, basically, we are assessed on our past years since. So right now, we're operating on 2017 year-end reporting information. And then we get to do some adjustments and to factor. If you looked at our borrowing, coming out of 2016, you would think that we were terribly irresponsible and that we had actually borrowed way past our means. But in fact, we actually did a great thing and we paid down debt, but it looked like debt service. So in the municipal stats, it looked like we had, we were offside. But really, we had done the right thing and paid off debt.
That was the oceanfront?
That was part of the oceanfront, was a big part of that, yes. And then, like I say, we've just been pulling the other authorized, loan authorizations down that we don't need.
Can you comment about what goes into that authorized but unissued number of 1.6?
So essentially, when we take a loan authorization bylaw out for a major project, that project might be multiple year, but we try and take the loan authorization for the project, right? So that the community really knows what it is they're giving us permission to go borrow for. So if it's a $3 million project, we think it's going to be a $3 million project. We make sure we have our debt service room in there, or there's a reserve, 1%, that we have to pay over and above that. And then you want to make sure you have contingencies, et cetera, in there, and you take that borrowing. But we may only take to borrowing at the venture two years. Like, we might go into construction financing and stuff, but we might not take borrowing until that final year when the project's wound up. And then we might not take the full 300,000. Maybe the project came out at 250 or something. So there's free boardroom. In the past, they also used to take the borrowing more regularly. So we might take this portion of the project to the venture, and we might take the next one to the venture. We're rethinking how we manage debt, and we may be doing more construction financing and then taking it all at once. It just depends on the project right now and what's been happening in the past. So, yeah, good? So accumulated surplus, or what we, I guess, deem our working capital. This, you saw this with the utilities. Hopefully, it still resonates with what's going on. But this is past year's surpluses that we hold. We are, our target is to hold 1/8. But we are right now doing some internal borrowing as we go before we take it to adventure. It's a little bit cheaper for us. And so some of these accumulated surpluses we're using for, to do some internal borrowing. So our networking capital is on the right in terms of money that's available to us and to run our operations on a day-to-day basis. Our cash flows are very, we're not like normal businesses generally where all of our revenue comes in on a pretty steady monthly basis. All of our revenue comes in in July. So through the year, we kind of have to have enough room and lines of credit. If we probably haven't had to use those very often recently, we basically use our working capital to try and keep our interest costs and things like that.
Do we charge ourselves interest when we borrow from ourselves?
We're supposed to if we borrow from a reserve. So, and again, I think our new systems will help us define that better, of what, you know, where we might be borrowing from ourselves and not realizing it. So we're doing some work on that right now, that whole investment area. We're trying to get better understanding of when we're borrowing from other positive money and stuff. Generally, yes, we are required, if we decided tomorrow that we were going to go tap into the sewer budget for something, we would have to very specifically go in, we'd have to set up a lending thing, and the minute sewer needed that, we'd have to replace the money. Just seeing if there's anything on here I wanted to tell you about. Oh, the only thing I'll say is when you tap into the accumulated surpluses, we try to make sure that you're tapping in for non-recurring items. So ideally, we don't tap in here to fund an operational year-over-year cost, because all it really does is push the cost out to the next year when you're no longer using the accumulated surplus. It's like going after your piggy bank. If you don't have the income and you keep going out and buying the car and buying the whatever off your piggy bank, pretty soon, there's going to come a point where you can't, or sorry, the car being a bad example, but a lease, if you were to lease a car, and you would know that cost is going to go for five years, you might end up running out of savings and not having the income to support that level. So the same concept here. We try and keep you to recur, non-recurring items, things that may be special for the current year or spike. It's really, the point of this is to help stabilize revenues. So if we have to bring it in to do that one-off thing, that's great.
Councilor Race?
Thank you. So, we're laughing. But accumulated surplus comes up sometimes as a real, it's like candy, where you think that you can fund your favorite project and it's not going to hit the tax roll. But we had a discussion, because it's generally speaking, the general fund accumulated surplus, it's generally speaking, monies we taxed for but didn't spend for somebody, whatever reason, a number of different reasons sometimes. So it's like profit from previous taxation. It's just kind of sitting there. But we've had discussions about the stuff that we should hold back for working capital, emergencies, et cetera. And so is that all reflected in the 2.514? And I don't recall exactly what we listed off that one time, but it was three or four different items.
Sorry, through the chair, the 2.514, sorry, what are you referencing that to?
In the top line of the century.
Oh, the, the internal borrowing.
During borrowing.
Sorry, yes. That's, that is specifically capital projects that we're funding until we can take it to the venture.
As part of our working capital?
So when we come to year end, we're still trying to figure out, so we haven't gone to borrowing some of our capital projects. So there's a sort of a holding pattern of time when we need to fund the past year. We need to, we need to come up with some revenue for it. So we pull from our accumulated surplus. And then in the next year, when we can actually go to borrowing, then we take it back out of there and borrow it.
And put it back in?
Yes.
My recollection was we also use it for sort of bridge financing until you got the tax revenue in July.
We, we-
Sometimes expenses.
Yes.
And then there's also just a bit of a cushion.
And for stabilization.
Because we had a discussion, you and I, as you know, about we should maybe spend the rest of it because we taxed for it. And so, but you don't want to be foolish about it. And so when we say that there's 1.9 net working capital, in your mind, is that all available to be applied towards budget items? I mean, I get the part that it shouldn't go in the operating budget, but if we had one-off capital things or instead of borrowing or something like that, is that all available using best practices, or is there some that we should be holding back for some rainy day?
So there's basically three things we use it for. We are using it to finance our capital until we can go to borrowing. We are also using it to do what you indicated, the operational piece. So we have enough cash in the bank that we don't have to tap into our long-term, or to our lines of credit. But we also use it for stabilization. So if, in scenarios where the spikes, and that's when it makes sense to put it to a key project. But again, I kind of try and get you to get it to a key project that isn't just one of the project envelope level. I don't like you to take that project envelope down too low because for us, even though the projects change, it's still a kind of a steady state that we need in the budget year-over-year to at least do some of your projects. So I also like to share the fund. I don't, this council, one year, if you used all of that, the next year, you had that one kind of thing you really wanted to do. You want to have enough left over, you can share the fund too. But to Counselor Race's point, we do need to, like, we do kind of check from time to time and go, oh, is that accumulated surplus kind of getting big? Like, do we really need that, or would it make sense to move it over to the capital area, or should we, you know, use it, start using it? So I'm open to using it. We're, but again, I try to steer you to using it for things that are over and above a baseline budgeting level, so that you don't cause a problem in the next year. Is that clear? I know that's not very clear.
No.
It's a nuance. It's a dance.
But for example, like, one of the ways we've used it is we have a fleet reserve, but it's for existing vehicles. And one of the things that we've used accumulated surplus for is to bring a new vehicle into the fleet. Because the reserve doesn't pay to bring a new vehicle in. It pays to replace the ones we already have. And so we have used it in the past to pay for new vehicles. It's a one-off cost, and then that vehicle in the reserve, and its replacement cost is built up in the reserve over the life of the vehicle.
That's a great example.
One example.
And I think this year, you know, council's asked us when we came to utilities to look at whether our equipment reserve wasn't cutting it, could we take the rest from accumulated surplus? And again, we're looking at that. We think that would be a good use of it for the exact same reason that Counselor Elliott's saying. The next time it comes back into our reserve, it's coming back in at a more market-worthy cost, and then it starts to generate its own money. So these are great examples of how to use accumulated surplus. Again, I'm not here to tell you not to use accumulated surplus. For the, again, the exact same reasons Counselor Race suggests we should. Taxpayers have given it to us. We want to make sure we don't just store it away in a coffers and it never gets used again. But we want to be cognizant to not cause a problem the year after. Because if all of your, if all of your levels of expenditure are this level, and then one year you unnaturally decide to bring it down to make a nice tax number and use accumulated surplus, you can only do that until your accumulated surplus ran out, and then you're still going to have to go back up to that level. So you're just deferring the problem. And by the time you get it back up to that level, there's probably seven other new things you want to. So you just want to be mindful of how you use your piggy bank, okay?
All right. So Counselor Race, did you follow?
Well, just very quickly, and that can happen quite easily, actually. It happened in the regional district a couple of years ago, where, once again, people thought it was great not to raise taxes, but it really wasn't a deal of the cost, and they were using surpluses and then new add-of-surplus. And then the taxes had to take a little sharp spike, which is typically not as nice as having a gradual increase to that level. So it's just something to keep in mind, because we do, I can assure you, we will be tempted.
Yeah. And there's times when I'll say, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, because it is over your envelope, or it is over whatever, and it makes sense because it's a really, truly a one-off type thing. So I'm not saying don't ever use it. I'm just saying, think about how you use it.
Counselor Ted, yeah?
So just trying to understand-
So just trying to understand what these things are, and how it all breaks down. A little while ago, before the break, we approved a paving plan, I think it was called, and there's some discussion that if you put in this much this year, then following years, here's your operating and maintenance cost. Arguably, we could have maybe turned to capital expense, done a huge upgrade on all the roads, and going forward, bring down our operational costs. So from that perspective, why wouldn't we have a paving fund that's, there's another line that we deal with a surplus, or, you know, maybe it's at $100,000 right now? Why is that different, on here, not on here?
Versus like water and sewer? Why is paving not, like a utility in its own right?
Right. So, and again, just to caution you that this is not, this is the accumulated surplus, it's not your capital reserve lines, I'll show you those shortly too. And we do build a general reserve up for those types of things as well. It's not as prescriptive. The beauty of that is that when different areas within the general fund go up and down, we can respond to those without having to go to that little pot of money and go, oh, I don't have enough to do anything with that yet, so. So the idea is, we're just trying to consolidate it. I feel like I'm not really answering your question, but.
We have been lots of small pots of money, we're trying to create one larger pot of money that can be used for more than one thing. So it would take a while to build up that paving utility, if we maybe, if we can, but then, then it has to be used for that.
So, and for that reason, paving is somewhere under the general fund?
In the general fund. Correct, yeah. Now, there's, there's lots of arguments, break it down more, show it as separate lines on the bills. My argument is, we could still show you roughly what it's costing you in paving and put that on a property tax insert or bill. We do break down our general government, if you see our inserts, we show you how much you're paying per month for police services versus something else. We try to do that, but we don't necessarily need an accounting regime and funding, funds that are separated to, to manage all those businesses. And sometimes it's really subtle, like especially when you get into some of the operational areas that are really interconnected, you know, we go through allocations to get engineering staff to water and sewer and solid waste, for instance, right? We got to go through allocations, and it complicates all the accounting, and when, at the end of the day, how much value does it add to break them all down? Water and sewer is considered a major, major piece of infrastructure, I guess there's arguments that you could do that with roads, but there's also, where do you draw the line? Is it sidewalks and roads? Is it transportation lines and roads? Is it, you know, there's lots of areas that kind of feed into that road infrastructure, even drainage. When we look at the drainage tools, like sometimes there's culverts, sometimes it's piping, does it belong in sewer, does it belong in general? We have that philosophical conversation often.
So we're past 3:30.
Yeah.
Where are we at?
I hopefully could wind up in about five if we can.
All right. So we pull our questions, and then let's get through the slides.
Yeah. So these are just some of those designated surpluses I told you about. The airport, we, we sometimes cordon off surpluses to specific areas, so that the forestry building pays for its own debt service with the revenues we bring in from the forestry building, airport, similar idea. Cyclical reserve was the one that Counselor, or Mayor Elliott was talking about earlier. We use this to fund our elections, to fund our GIS orthomaps every four or five years. We use it for collective bargaining that we do every three to five years. So we put a little bit away each year into our cyclic reserve and then pull it back in to stabilize the revenues. Protective services, that's a bit of a historical one, and it is something I do need to look at and decide if we any longer need that level of provision there. And the community amenity contributions, that's all designated. We know specifically how that's broken down, we have background information for how it's been designated or given to us to use, but to Counselor, to Mayor Elliott's point, we are trying very hard to get that more generic as well, so it gives you more flexibility to truly use those balances for worthwhile purposes. And then we have a couple of smattering of other things, like donations to animal control and things like that, and another one that, over the years, managed because funds were given us to us for a specific purpose, so we're trying to just recognize that. Here's all of the various reserves, everything that's out there. So our land sale reserve is now, after the selling of the oceanfront lands, et cetera, and our industrial lands, we now have a pretty hefty land sale reserve to the comments before. We kind of treat that as our emergency, and we'll probably use that for some of our facility and land acquisitions going forward, so we'll see that come into play. The equipment reserve, it stays in a pretty steady state, it's gone from about 5.1 to 5.3, so it's a, I would say it's a well-functioning reserve. It goes up and down as we, as we need it, and there's a very prescriptive bylaw around it. It's working quite well despite, despite what you're seeing with the accumulated surplus, it is a really well thought-out bylaw. And then the rehab and replacements are, this is just the general fund, so that's the 3.9 we talked about. We have gas tax funding that we also leverage in, we use it for active transportation in a number of our studies. We have affordable housing reserve, parking and lieu, those ones are legis, parking and lieu and off-street parking are legislated, they have to be in separate reserves. We have the sinking fund surplus, which basically just manages, when our sinking funds come in, upper or below, either above or below our debt requirement to pay off our borrowing, our adventure borrowing, this allows us to be able to deal with that without disrupting or having to scramble to find funds. The corridor trail, I need to explore more, I don't know if anyone knows more about that one. It's one of the ones I should probably have a good look at. And then the carbon neutral comes in from our, our reporting and our grants that we get back for our carbon reporting. And, yeah, and then there's a little bit of legacy left, which was something that came up through the Olympic Games, I don't know if that's all been always been. And same, you saw the utility reserves, so I won't stop and go through that, you saw that before, so just a snapshot there, because we're doing it all. We have your DCC reserves, Council, Counselor Anderson, broken down. We have, the bottom two are ones that are restricted under our front-end agreements, very specifically for oceanfront, the rest are fair game, and then they can tap into a certain percentage of it per quarter, if they have projects in stream that we should be repaying for. So where do we go from here? We have a workshop on the 22nd, where we're going to try and do an overview now of the general fund and what management is bringing forward for recommendations. And we tentatively have a workshop for January 29th, envisioning that being where we wrap back up the utilities, answer any outstanding questions for you, and start to talk about whether you're comfortable to take the package out to a public meeting. And then we've set the public meeting date is what we're thinking. If we need more workshops, we kind of work with you, figure that out as we go, but that's the tentative plan right now.
Thank you. Counselor Ray?
What are we going to do with the capital?
In the general, when we look at the general fund.
Or it'll be a capital?
It'll be part of that discussion. So that, sometimes it's hard to get through all of those various areas within a span of three to four hours, as you can see, even just talking and prepping you for it took a lot longer than we thought. So we don't always get through as fast as we think we will, but we are hoping to bring you some, these higher-level concepts, and then see how comfortable you are with distribution of funds and things, and hopefully, see if we can.
Any other quick questions?
Mitigate the pain.
All right. And just a heads up to council, is my hope and dream, that in future years, we will be finishing the budget before the end of the year. So that by December 31st, we have a budget. That's the goal. So this year, it got pushed out, because we had an election, then we wanted to do strategic planning to see if we could have an opportunity to align our funding in the budget. Once that plan's in place, so we expect to be back in budget in the fall.
Two budgets in 2019.
Yes. See how exciting it will be?
There'll be a whistling.
And I, just, it gives our staff some certainty, it gives our, our capital projects a long runway to have that budget in place by the end of the year, so that they're ready to go when the weather gets better. And it just makes us more efficient. So that's the hope, and hopefully we can do it in 2019, let's see, you know, small steps, Counselor.
I've been looking at the advertisements, Friday's e-news regarding the budget, I think it looks really good. But my question relative to your comments, Mayor Elliott, is that what does this mean for public participation? It's a bad time to be a public participation. Would we then schedule it during January, or would you wrap up publicly, but also by the end of the year?
By end of year. So by January 1st, we're good to go.
It's a difficult time to bring people up.
Oh, for sure, but I, I think there's other municipalities that are doing this, and I think there's a way. And we need to come up with that way, so that there's consultation that happens, and we're still going through all the process. But I'm not sure why we should be any different than Vancouver or Surrey that head up our just dark, I think it would be. So, like I said, it's, it's a work in progress, but that is the goal, is to start the year with a budget simple.
And we'll, we can bring, like, usually in the summer, we bring back to council and we talk about the schedule going forward and what it entails, and there will be a couple of tricks to actually, you know, we can certainly put a preliminary out, but there's a couple of tricks that will hold you up maybe, and that we don't even get the completed role until December, sometimes that's uncomfortable for councils, and carry forward information that we don't usually know until January, February, but we can certainly put out a provisional and then update with any of those.
So it might take us a few years to get there.
Exactly.
But that's the goal, is to pull it forward.
I think it's all of our goals, so I can.
Counselor Ray?
Well, just to Counselor Anderson's point, these meetings, of course, are streamed, live and archived, and typically, when we're in a budget discussion, there's somebody from communications sitting here, looking for emails, and people are encouraged, because they can be watching this from home, to email or phone in a question. And so sometimes, they'll end up answering those right, right now. And so there is a certain amount of participation, without somebody having to get babysitters[1780.51]